Call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of June 17th. We'll note that Commissioner Altman is absent. All other commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
The motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? I have a question, probably go to you, Mr. Watson, but on the Item C there, the Dickinson interim bypass project, I noticed, I think there was close to half a million dollars of water pipe and sewer pipe. And what I couldn't remember is, the other day when you met with Commissioner Jackson and I and other team members, and we went through those 27 projects, was this one of the 27 that?
Mr. President, Commissioner, this is actually part of the 18-inch water main tie that will tie into the existing water tank facility, which is just due east of 30th Avenue and 15th Street. So, the answer is yes.
Yes.
It is part of that.
Okay.
And the future project will tie into that facility, which will tie into some other facilities. But we're just installing this now as part of the DOT construction project.
But we had somewheres north of $170 million worth of projects on that list. This is part of that $170 million.
Right, although it's not actually identified as a separate project on the list, but it's part-
But it was included in, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Is there any other items you wish to question or discuss on the consent agenda?
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Not, we'll vote, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda, and the first item we have there is the financial report. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'll highlight a few items from the financial report through May. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 42 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.3 million, and we're 96 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees total $174,000, and we're 72 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals, which include the revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and oil production tax, totals $1.1 million and is 27 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services, which include things such as building permit revenue and oil royalties, is 27 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $316,000 over last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are running equal to last year. Our total general fund revenues equal $6.1 million through May, and we're 45 percent collected compared to budget.
Ms. Johnson? Of the license fees services, the $93,000, how much is that for the royalty?
That is just under $200,000, I believe, is our, we have budgeted $200,000, and I believe the amount we collected is below that. Our general fund expenses through May include our general government, which is administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is 42 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety is 38 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets now includes our community development, and is 48 percent expended compared to budget. Our overage here is due to budgeted equipment purchases in our streets department. And our cultural services, which includes our museum and forestry, is 32 percent expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenses equal $5.9 million through May, and we're 43 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $3.2 million through May, and we're 43 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses in capital outlays total $2.8 million, which is 38 percent expended compared to budget. And our solid waste fund revenues total $1.7 million through May, which is 44 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses in capital outlays total $1.1 million, which is 29 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $648,000 of revenue in May, which is up 4 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into three segments. The first is our 50 percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. In 2013, we are budgeting infrastructure projects totaling $850,000, but no direct transfer to our street projects fund. The second is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, Elder Care, and RSPP subsidies, along with the senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. Our expenses through May total $405,000. And the third is our 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The items budgeted here include a portion of the final VAC pledge payment, the animal shelter, trails construction, and park and rec improvements. In our half percent sales tax, we received $324,000 of revenue in May, which is also up 4 percent for the year. We are budgeting $4 million towards the public works building construction in 2013. In our hospitality tax, we received $93,000 of revenue in May, which is down 12 percent over last year. Our expenses include $50,000 towards the Stark County Veterans Memorial, and $37,000 for the environmental assessment at the airport to upgrade to jet service. Our occupancy tax report shows that our revenues total $40,000 in May, which is down 38 percent over last year. Our expenses include $135,000 paid to the CVV for their subsidy, and $60,000 for the special events grant. In our street projects report, we received $218,000 in revenues, and we've expended $212,000 towards projects through May. And our development impact fee program shows that we have a balance of $91,000 at the end of May. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any comments or questions? Again, is there anything that you've seen through five months that concerns you, either on the revenue or expense side?
We are seeing, our expenses are coming right in line with budget at this point. Some revenue lines that we're seeing an increase. Our building permit revenues have just hit our budgeted $600,000 already through May. That's the one that jumps out at me, that everything else seems to be running in line.
Thank you. Anything else? Now, would there be a motion to accept the financial report?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
We have the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Okay, we'll go, Item B, the Extra Mile America Foundation Proclamation, and we'll ask Mr. Kessel to read that proclamation, and if you have any comments regarding it.
Thank you, President Johnson. Celebrate Extra Mile Day 2013 proclamation, whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which chooses to shine a light on celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 400 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2013. Now therefore, I, President of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2013 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all of those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Is there any objection to the mayor proclaiming November 1st, 2013 as Extra Mile Day? Okay, well, Commissioner Steiner, we'll have you go two miles that day, okay?
I'll have trouble with half a mile.
You're gonna have trouble half a mile? Okay, well, we'll consider-
Go the extra half mile.
Extra half mile, all right. Well, you know, if you'd go that half mile and just fall over, you'd come pretty close to that full mile. Okay. We'll go to Item C. Is there a proclamation for me to sign, then, a copy? Okay, we'll get that after me. We'll go to Item C, which is the sales tax bonding ordinance, and Mr. Coling, are you introducing that?
I am, Mr. President. The ordinance before you has been requested by the city's bond council, and it pertains to pledging of 1 percent sales tax revenues toward projects that may be bonded or bondable. You'll recall the half percent sales tax has specific language in it that allows the city commission to pledge the revenues of the half percent sales tax to projects that may be funded, or may be bondable projects. But the 1 percent sales tax does not have that similar language in it. This ordinance would correct that and would allow the city commission to pledge the revenues from the 1 percent sales tax in order to fund projects for which the city may issue bonds. Specifically, this ordinance references the West River Community Center and the project that is now being designed and is ongoing to expand that community center campus. For your record-keeping, this will be ordinance number 1513, and city staff would recommend approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Are there any comments or questions by city commissioners? There are no comments by city commissioners. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments regarding ordinance No one from the public. This is first reading, so the chair entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1513.
So move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion?
I don't know, Ms.-
Go ahead.
I don't know if you mentioned, but it's for the issuance of the 17.5 million.
That's correct. 17.5 million is the current projection of what the city would issue for a bond on the community center project, and that would be incorporated in the ordinance by this document.
So it's not open-ended?
Mr. Coling, we're likely to, let's see, this is on the 1 percent, isn't it?
That's correct. This would be the 30 percent share of the 1 percent.
Okay. I'm fine with that, yeah. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I think we have the motion and the second, so go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Item D is the infrastructure prioritization policy. We discussed this at the previous meeting. Mr. Coling, would you go ahead and introduce it? And in your introductory remarks, if you made any changes to the policy that you showed us, would you highlight those?
Certainly. Mr. President Commissioners, this resolution, as was discussed at the last meeting, sets forth some policy guidelines for the city and city staff in prioritizing infrastructure projects that the city may be funding. Prioritization is principally given to those projects that are emergency or legal requirements for the city to meet, and thereafter goes toward major infrastructure, system-wide improvements, such as the wastewater treatment plant and trunk lines for water and sewer and transportation infrastructure that the city may be constructing in the future. There were a couple of changes that were made to this resolution, this policy, since the last meeting. The first is, on the first page, to add some language about addressing the emergency, immediate emergency conditions. If we do have immediate emergencies that the city needs to address with the construction of infrastructure, that would be a priority under this policy. Additionally, we made some changes to Items 4, excuse me, Items 5 and 6, I believe it was, which addressed when we are constructing infrastructure that either is intended to provide services to existing structures or to platted developments. There's a prioritization of zoning in there, and if you recall, in the previous version of this resolution, we had indicated specific priorities of what the city has in terms of residential and commercial and industrial structures. This version of the resolution and the policy includes those same prioritizations, but recognizes that we are in a dynamic environment, and the city's priorities in terms of zoning designations may change over time. So you would have the flexibility under this policy to change those prioritizations if needed. The remainder of the resolution and policy remains the same, and city staff would recommend approval. For your record-keeping, this will be Resolution 23-2013.
Ordinarily, we don't ask for public comment on resolutions, but I would make an exception in this case, and if there is someone from the public that would like to comment at this time on this resolution, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's nobody from the public that'd like to comment. Invite commissioners to make their comments or ask their questions.
Mr. President, I think that, I think this is really well done. You can see there's been a lot of work put into it, and I think it's a really necessary policy for us. The biggest thing, I think, moving forward is that it's gonna give us some consistency that I think is really critical right now. I do think we need to recognize that maybe six months down the road, 12 months down the road, we may decide this needs some massaging, and I think that's okay. We should be fine with that, if and when that ever happens. If we get it all right, right now, tonight, boy, somebody's pretty good. But it's well done. I just think we need to not feel bad if a few months out, we need to massage it a little
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Well, then, the chair would entertain a motion to either approve this Resolution 23 or disapprove it.
I'll move we approve the resolution.
Sir, we have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the city administrators' reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioner. The first item I have for you tonight is the budget calendar. It is upon us already, and so the 2014 budget calendar is presented to you. The first thing I want to point out is that we have a subsidy grant meeting, as we do every year, scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th, in just a couple days, to hear people's requests for subsidy and be part of that 2014 budget. Some of the other points I just wanted to mention is that we also have a work session, usually slated in July or August. We have a tentative work session included for August 12th. That is a commission meeting day, a meeting in the morning. Now, there was some comment, I believe, at our last year's work session to separate those two. If you'd like to do that, this is obviously a point where we'd like to hear your input. If you want to keep it on the same day, that's great. But we just wanted to make sure that you had a pretty good idea of what's gonna happen this year, and if you have questions, or I'd like to address those now. Commissioner Jackson, you look like you have one.
I was going to suggest just the opposite. August 12th is not a regular city commission meeting day.
Oh, yes, you're right. It's an opposite one, yeah.
And personally, I'd prefer if we moved it to the 5th or the 19th, but I certainly would defer to whatever consensus we have as a group.
I agree, assuming you can, the materials would be available for the regular meeting on that Friday, so we can go through the agenda or the items there. Otherwise, you know, I know I end up going through them Monday morning or Monday afternoon, but as long as we're going to be meeting as city commission, I mean, do it the whole day.
Whole day. I would suggest the 19th. We're scheduled to have the budget work session materials done on the 7th. So if we moved it to the 5th, that would advance our schedule on a few other things as well. Would the 19th work for everyone?
Works for me.
Okay, what's tentatively planned then? Monday, August 19th, for the city commission work session, beginning at 9 o'clock at The next item on the agenda then is the subsidy meeting, which I just mentioned, which is scheduled for Wednesday from 1:00 to 5:00 in this room. You should have received a invitation to that meeting already, and we have sent out invitations to other entities that have generally been part of the subsidy request process. The next item is-
Mr. Kessel, just, I will be out of town that day, so I decline the meeting, but I just make sure that Mr. Jackson knows that he'll be chairing the meeting, and do you have a quorum?
I believe we do. We have a quorum. You'd be the only absence.
Okay.
Commissioner Jackson, are you prepared to lead us on that day?
Absolutely.
That's the-
You're in good hands.
That's the great, great response. Okay, the next item then is an administrative assistance staff. We currently have two admin assistants working in the engineering and community development planning areas. One of them is funded by engineering, and the other is funded by community development and planning. Now, if you recall, these departments used to be within the same department when we had a combined engineer-public works director. When we separated, well, under that scenario or that organizational flow chart, it allowed the admin assistants to be fluid with their time. In other words, they spent the majority of their time on where the work was. And as you can imagine, the dramatic rise in building permit issuance quickly usurped their time in the building and planning department. And engineering was then left with little to no time being provided by an admin assistant. This, we augmented the engineering staff with a temporary limited hour person that was hired to bridge the gap between. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the concept, at least, of hiring a full-time benefited person in the engineering department, or, excuse me, in the planning department, and then pull out the staff that is being paid for by engineering, but they're not receiving services. This would mean a difference this year of about $15,000. Next year, it would mean a difference of between $25,000 and $30,000. As you've heard earlier this evening, we have currently met our building permit issuance revenue stream of $600,000. And this would be the revenue stream that we'd suggest to pay for the difference between the two positions, as I've mentioned. And you'll get a more detailed report of the building permit issuance for the remainder of the year and ensuing years by Community Development Director Cortan a little later tonight. We also, based on that prioritization policy that you approved this evening, have literally millions of dollars of projects that we've identified in the comp plan that we would like to conduct this year and next year. Could be as high as $100 million in projects. That obviously is gonna tax our staff. The amount of paperwork and project management that'll go into that would be assisted by an administrative assistance to make sure that the paperwork flow is conducted timely and accurately. So I wanted to throw that out this evening, so you can think about it, and then I'd like to bring back at a future commission the idea of beginning that, changing it from a half-time position to a full-time position yet this year. So is there any questions about that concept?
So the primary work would be in the planning department?
Right, because what we would do-
Except the engineering?
Yeah, because engineering right now is paying for an admin assistant that's working pretty much full-time in the planning side. So what I'd like to do is pull that engineering position out of planning, so that engineering can use that individual that they've been paying for on a regular basis, and then augment the staff that they've gotten used to in the planning side with a new full-time person.
So the part-time person in engineering will become full-time?
Yeah, they actually started part-time in planning, but they would become, if all works out and she'd be the person hired, she'd like to go full-time in the engineering department. And the current staff in the planning department may be the future staff as well, but I know it's confusing.
I know they both need a lot of help.
You're talking about a net gain of a half a position.
That's exactly right. Yes.
And how you sort out who goes where is really up to management. Just, I mean, do you have a sense of what do you think is going to happen next year in terms of building permit revenue?
Yeah, and I think Mr. Corton is gonna go over that a little later this evening. Maybe you'd like to-
I mean, do you sense revenues will be about the same next year, building permit revenue, or less or more? I guess just-
To answer your question, Mayor, I would anticipate that if we're balancing, if we're using a budget of $600,000 like we've done this year, which we have exceeded after five months, and this is with a significant reduction with the building permit totals that we've incurred thus far, I'm anticipating for at least the next several years to be able to match that figure, if not exceed that.
The $600,000?
Absolutely. And that's what we've been using our budget last year and this year. I have various, various projections that we have. I can kind of, I can go over that if you like now, or I could talk about it at that stage, but I think that the next several years, we should exceed that $600,000, and that would match the salary that we would need to fund the position, and engineering would include that as well. So, I feel very confident with respect to that, based upon our demand that we're showing.
Okay.
I'd have to agree with Mr. Corton. I think with lots becoming available now and getting their whack-in sack, or what do we call it? We'll be able to sell them and start building on them where they've been kind of on hold.
So, Mrs. Stookard, you think demand for housing at the present is still pretty strong?
Yes, it is.
Well, I'm not sensing any objections here to increasing that half-time position to full-time.
I'll bring a more detailed report then at the next commission meeting. Thank you. The last item on the agenda then is the HR Coordinator's report, and Ms. Nomenoch is here to provide that for you this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. We, at the top of your list, you see police officer position. We had three openings the beginning of May, completed that interview process, and we did make one hire. One is still in the background phase, so it's possible we could have two hires there. Water utility operator, you can see we've had some difficulty filling. Water utility operator, you can see we've had some difficulty filling. We opened a position, did not make an, we made an offer, it was declined. We reopened several times. We're at the interview process right now again.
I have a question. Do we have three of those positions open, or just one?
Police officer?
No, the water-
Water's one.
Just one, okay.
Mm-hmm. Street maintenance operator, we've had some difficulty there, too. I think all the operator positions were just having a tough time getting applicants. We've opened, have not interviewed, opened again, did not interview, and we're at that point again, we're kind of holding off on that one. Sanitation operator, we just completed interviews and did make an offer, and that person accepted. We do still have another operator position open, however, for sanitation department. The part-time deputy clerk of court was filled, and the seasonal positions, we're looking real good there. We have a possible code enforcement position that we're going to fill, but at this time, they're not sure they are going to fill it. Communication specialist position was just filled. Part-time HR assistant, still in the interview process. Assistant city engineer, we went through two interviews so far, and we're going to bring several candidates in for personal interviews in a couple of weeks. And so now, police officer position closes today, and we have two to three openings at this time for that one. That's all I have.
Any comments or questions here?
With the water utility, is that skilled, a skilled position, or is it the salary? What is?
Well, that's really the lowest position they have in that department. They do require CDL after they've been with us, within 90 days, they have to have a CDL. And that's probably our big issue there, is trying to hire those people who have CDLs.
Thank you.
The number of applicants that are withdrawn, is it mainly, are they saying it's because of the salary, or?
In those positions, yes. Some of the other ones, it's for different reasons, but for those departments.
Police Department?
Police Department. With, we don't get a lot of withdrawals, withdrawn offers there. Sometimes with the police department, maybe they haven't finished their education yet, and they want to finish before they come and apply. Sometimes they just don't want to move here.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a timetable agenda item at 5:00. This is a presentation on aerial photography, and Mr. Watson, are you introducing this item? Is this something you're bringing to us?
Mr. President, Commissioner, I've asked Terry Keaton of KBM Incorporated from Grand Forks to give a small presentation, short presentation today on the advantages of LiDAR imaging, with anticipation of contracting with KBM Incorporated to provide LiDAR imaging for Dickinson.
Okay. Mr. Keaton, welcome.
Good afternoon. Again, my name's Terry Keaton. I'm the president of KBM out of Grand Forks, and usually a presentation takes a lot longer than this, so we're going to cut it real quick down. Let's see. Just basically what photogrammetric is going to do is just going to be a quick process of making measurements on the ground. Same thing a surveyor would do on the ground, we can do from aerial photography. Do it a lot faster and be just as accurate as a surveyor. We do visual interpretation using hard copied photos. We use, we view everything in 3D, just as you would watch a movie in 3D, and we draw everything in so that everything has a eastern and northern and an elevation to every point that's taken in there. So if there's a building top, it has a coordinate value to it that's assigned to it. And everything's with digital photography and, and this is a typical flight line pattern real quick where you do stereo models. The way you see the 3D is each model is 50% overlap from the previous model. The sideline, the side, side models, as the flight line goes back down the other side, is 30%. Everywhere there's 50% and 30% is where you can see the 3D. That's why each one's at 50% across. The accuracy is based off the altitude of the aircraft. The lower the altitude, the better vertical accuracy you get. 1,500 feet, altitude above ground, you can get a tenth of a foot vertical accuracy to eight hundredths vertical accuracy. Horizontal is within five hundredths. This is shape files for a city that was done, and it's basically go into the GIS database. It's used for, the LiDAR processing of it is used for topographic to get contour interval so that you can see water drainage issues, design, design from it. And these shape files are used so that they, they're intelligent shape files, so they have a lot of metadata to them that will bring up, if you was in a storm area where you have a lot of vegetation in the city and you have a tornado come through, you can actually calculate the volume of debris that you would need to move out of the city after something come through, because everything is, is connected with itself in the metadata. The same as streets, driveways, you can calculate how many cubic yards of driveways you have in the whole city, whether they're concrete, gravel, they're broken out, the same as the roads. You can also look at it and tell on the road maintenance, what lanes need to be repaired, what sections need repaired, and it will help you plan where you need to shut down traffic and how you need to divert traffic to get that done that doesn't cause a lot of problems with the traffic in the cities. So the shape files work real well in the GIS. It's also used for your 911 system. Police departments use the JPG images in their police car. It actually brings up on the computer, and it can show them which way to go, and it, and that mega data, when they hit the button on a certain house, it can bring up a list of stuff that you've accumulated in there from the sensors or whatever, the person that lives there, if he's disabled, handicapped, or whatever, or any information that you need to put in there, if he's a heart patient or something like that. And it also works well for the fire department, getting them to the location also. And all this is inside a GIS database that can be updated every few years also. This is just showing what a digital ortho would look like. This was a crane that fell over on a plant back in Texas. We flew it for OSHA, and so that they could move their containment area around daily. And this is things considered when you're looking for someone to do your LiDAR. This is just a quick punch list of the things that you need to look at, and you need to know, like especially the requirements of what you want to use the LiDAR for, and the point density for the client. The point density is going to dictate the contour interval, whether it's one-foot, two-foot contour interval. And you'll never want to use two-foot contour interval for any type of design work. You'd at least want one-foot contour for that. Two-foot contour would be for water drainage issues and stuff like that. So you kind of need to know, these are some of the things you want to note in there. And also, if your GIS database, you want to know what coordinate system you're going to use. The DOT uses ground surface coordinates a lot, and that doesn't work too well in the GIS database. It uses the state plane coordinate system. And polygon of the project area, this is things that you would need from the client so that you can make sure that you fly the correct area the first time around and not have to come back. And that's just probably like the map over behind you on your, on this side of the wall. It's a closed polygon of the city limits, or the county limits, or whatever area you want to fly, so that the flyer's got that. He puts it in a, the airplane, and it fires the camera by airborne GPS, and that way it covers the exact area, so nothing's missing. That also falls on the project specifications. Accuracy in standards, you want to use the ASPS accuracy, which is a national mapping accuracy standards for the work, to make sure that you have the accuracy you need for what you're wanting to do the work for. And acquisition and processing and estimates, of course, you want to get estimates so you know how much things are costing you as it's going. And this is just a basic, quick LiDAR production workflow. It just tells you how's everything works from data collection to preliminary processing to the data processing, and then basically your general product generation at the end where you get the contour, the feature attractions, because you could pull the buildings, trees, power poles, manholes, fire hydrants. All that is an intelligent data. It's all on its own level structure. It can be brought into ArcGIS, it can be brought into AutoCAD, it can be brought into microstation. And surveyors and engineers are used. The only thing you can't get from aerial is what you can't see under the ground, which are flow lines and things like that. This is just basically deliverables, what you would get with a LiDAR file, was the bearer of point cloud, and this kind of tells you about how the return rates are. It's a radar. It can be flown at night, it can be flown during the day, it can be flown in bad weather with it raining. It just can't be flown above the clouds. So, and if you want the photography, the LiDAR unit we use is a Regal system. It has a built-in 54-megapixel digital camera with it, the LiDAR unit, so it takes the photographs at the same time that it's collecting the LiDAR data, and it has an IMU in it which collects the orientations of the photography so that everything can be brought up and mapped. So you get your planometric features, and you can get everything extracted out of it. And this is what they, just, this was just thrown up there, it's real quick, it's terrain shadowing. It's just showing that if you have ravines and ditches, what the LiDAR unit does, normally it would go across there, you'd go back with another pass. And this is what a LiDAR point cloud would look like of a roadway and a bridge and other underpass going under it, and you can see the vegetation and how it would contour the area. And this is a LiDAR stereo pair. It looks like two images. It is not images, it's nothing but millions of points that are collected, those black spaces that are open, or lakes, buildings, or something like that, that's man-made, that's man-made features that's not used for the topo. And this is typical road intersection. To the left, you've got the photography. To the right, you've got the LiDAR point cloud, so that you can see that it's, it's actually picking up all the returns. And that's pretty much it on the slide, and I'm sure there's probably some questions. Usually, the presentation lasts about an hour because it goes in a lot more detail, so I cut it as short as I could cut it, kind of give you an overview of what it was. We did put a LiDAR unit in aircraft. We've flown a couple of projects. Actually, this past Saturday, I flew this city with LiDAR last Saturday, and I used AE2S to put down a base station for me while I was doing it as a test project, to see how it would work, because that was the first time we've had our LiDAR unit actually put into our aircraft. Our company, we're the only company in North Dakota that has an aircraft with a RC-30 camera and the LiDAR unit with its 54-megapixel camera. Next closest company that has an aircraft like that would be Fergo out of South Dakota. And we do, I'm a certified photogrammetricist with ARPS, so I would sign and seal anything that has to do with any type of contour and mapping for accuracy, vertical accuracy or horizontal. And I think I gave, Mr. Watson, I flew Dickinson as a promo for some digital orthos about a month and a half ago, and I talked to him on the phone, asked him, did he need some? And he said, yes. So I sent him over to him and gave him the digital orthos. It doesn't probably cover the whole area you have there, because I didn't have any type of polygon. It was just something that I was doing as we were flying from another project. I decided to fly over the city and take the photographs. That was taken at 3,800 feet. The digital orthos for that were quarter of a foot pixel resolution, which means, and it was georeference to the airborne GPS in the aircraft, so it's in the right coordinate system. You could take horizontal measurements off the photography from a quarter of a foot horizontally, and basically, that's about it.
Okay, well, thank you. Other than Gene Jackson up here, we probably didn't understand a whole lot of what you said. So I'll ask, do we have any questions here first? I think, I guess, Mr. Watson, have you worked with this technology in your prior life?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The reason that we, that we are asking for, and really, what I'm doing here today is asking for the commission authorization to get in, to go into contract with KBM for a fee not to exceed $10,000 to provide LiDAR imaging of the city, so, and that imaging will provide one-foot contours of the entire city so that we can see where the drainage is going to go, how high the streets are and so forth, so that, and that'll dovetail right into the stormwater management plan that I'm going to ask for authorization for later this evening for approval to award that. So this LiDAR imaging, together with the digital, or together with the stormwater management plan, will provide the city with an excellent plan to move forward and to help mitigate any flooding issues that might arise.
Would you use this information for any other projects besides the water drainage project?
Yes. As, as Terry indicated, this can be input directly into the GIS and bring out all sorts of points for, as he indicated, we can identify where the fire hydrants are, where, where all the trees are, and where the street limitations are, and what is asphalt and what's concrete. We could even get into some street maintenance projects with, using these imagings. So this is a very, very excellent tool for the engineers, not only for the city, but for the engineers in the area if we want to make that available to them. So, and as Terry indicated, he provided us with a, with, with three-inch, excuse me, resolution orthos just a few weeks ago that we haven't been able to actually open yet to see, but three-inch resolution is a very good photograph, so we have an updated aerial photography of the city that we can all refer to now and see the development that's going on in the city. So this is a very important step for the city in order to get this LiDAR imaging and the orthos that Terry provided at free of charge, I might add, to the city.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Jackson, have, during your career, have you worked with this technology?
I have, and I agree 100% with what Mr. Watson is saying to us. Tremendous technical tool for us, you know, fast growth, the fast-growth mode that we're in right now, and gee, it'll be a tremendous tool, not only for city engineering, but for consultants, as Mr. Watson has said, so, good deal.
Mr. President, I could also add, I've used similar technology in the past. When I was in Florida, we had one of the best GIS sites in the state of Florida, and spent a lot of money doing that. And it was tremendous help in the planning department to determine, you know, where subdivisions should be, analyzing them, where road patterns can go, also dealing with the violation and complaint issues. You could go out there, look at it a fixed period of time, and know if this project has changed and the rest, and it's a very good thing to have that each year, to have that as part of a, an inventory of your city and how it's grown for so many different avenues. So I could strongly, I'd strongly recommend that we would move forward with the project like this.
Can I make one comment? You can also use it for your county tax appraisers, for taxing and appraising the property. If they're building pools, or they're putting buildings in the back of the yard that they didn't submit permits for, it's very easy to find those in the photography. A lot of times, that's what the cities and counties are using it for.
You aren't tied up with the NSA, are you?
I was going to say, we weren't going to bring that one up, that you-
Mr. President, a comment here. With your introductory fee of $10,000, I'm assuming that a lot of this is information that we're having to pay engineers for, and I mean, this would save us a lot of money in the long run, I'm assuming, having all, what this can do for us, number one. Do you want to comment on that?
I could. Commissioner Stein, the, I guess the short version is that this information just hasn't been collected yet, and this is, this was an important step to moving forward to, as Mr. Corton indicated, a better development phase, as well as more information for the engineering arena. a better development phase, as well as more information for the engineering arena.
Second question I have is, you're talking about mapping of Dickinson. Will this also map out to the ETZ zone?
What is the ETZ?
Extra territory zone, two miles past the city limit.
When I flew the orthos, we didn't have a boundary line in Dickinson, so I kind of figured one out myself. We did go about three to four miles out to the east and west of the side of Dickinson. But when I did the orthos, I didn't go down to the airport. But on the LiDAR, it goes south to the airport, all the way to the airport, because I spoke to one of your city consultants from HDR, and they had made a recommendation that if I flew the LiDAR to go down to the airport, just because of the changes that was being made there. If the city would send me that polygon that's back there behind the wall, we could fly, that area would be covered in the LiDAR data. And it was, one of the reasons why the price is what it is, is because it was a pilot project for myself, because we just put the LiDAR unit in aircraft and flew a couple of projects. So it was something that I was kind of doing, the same as when my pilots are out flying, sometimes I have them hit some of the oil patch cities like Taoga, Williston, Wofford and stuff for digital orthos, just as promotional, so that I build up historical coverage at our office, because we've been in business since 1952 flying. They did lose a lot of photography in the floods that year, but we have photography way back to 1952. And so it helps our historical coverage. But it is something that the cities, especially if they're updating their GIS database for 911 or whatever, it's something that you want to keep up, because if you stop doing it after the first time, then you're right back where you were before you started. So it's something that's, every couple of years, it's something that you want to do is update that GIS database so that you keep it updated, because if you don't, you're back in the very beginning again. Topo in the area, I mentioned mapping it, the LiDAR data is a 3D point, it's a return, radar return goes down to the ground, hits the ground, shoots back to the aircraft, is collected on a base station on the ground, that data. And it throws millions and millions of points on the ground, and the first return is the ground, the second return could be a building or a tree. So during processing and cleaning up that LiDAR data, the buildings and trees are classified out so that you have bare earth, which is where you get your topographic mapping from, so that you get your contours out of it. The classification of the buildings and stuff is usually drawn in, so that you have your buildings in, you assign your street address to it, you assign whatever you want to it, same as your roads and your curbs and all that stuff is usually drawn in in a different thing. What I'm looking at, giving the city for this, is a topographic 3D model of a city, and it's for, you know, their consultants, if they're, you know, and it's also for the city, because if you're doing a lot of construction on the roads, it's very helpful, because, again, it's millions of points, and it looks like an image because of some million of points. The points that have been taken are four points per meter, which is a lot of points if you start looking at the ground at one meter, and there's four points in a meter, and each one of those points has an elevation and a horizontal, an X and a Y, which is an eastern and northern elevation to it. So a lot can be done with the data that, you know, is just used for everything.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Keaton will be flying the ETZ, and we're going to be asking him to go out to Exit 56 and as far down as the airport.
Great.
So that will all be included in the LiDAR.
Good. Well, it sure sounds like this is the thing to do. Does any commissioner have any concerns or objections to doing this? I think Mr. Watson and his memos indicated that he would like commission approval for this, so the chair to entertain a motion to retain Mr., to retain KBM for this service for a fee of $10,000. Is that what you had in mind, Mr. Watson?
That's correct.
Okay. So...
I'll move, we approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing now the vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Keaton.
Thank you for your time.
We look forward to the results of your photography.
Sure. If you've got any questions, got my number. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to public safety, and I believe we have a report by the fire department.
President Johnson, commissioners, people new to Dickinson don't realize that our city is served by a fire department that relies mostly on volunteer members. That's a strong statement to the professionalism of our department. But tonight, I want to talk a little bit about our efforts, what we do, and how successful we are in getting those members. Our recruitment efforts include informational materials such as pamphlets that we pass out, posters that we put up around the city, the media, radio spots, television commercials, our website, DickinsonFire.com, and probably the most successful and the best way for us to get new members, personal contact. Commissioners, I can tell you that our recruitment efforts are successful. In 2009, which is a year that we kind of recognize as the beginning of what we affectionately call the boom, we had five new members join our department that year. We had three members resign. We ended the year with 38 members. Total number of calls that year at year-end was 218. In 2010, we had seven members join. By the end of the year, we had lost seven. Again, end of year total, we were at 38. Number of calls had crept up to 240. In 2011, we brought in six people. Unfortunately, by year-end, we'd seen eight of our members leave us. Total at the end of the year was 36 members. That's not comfortable. That's not a comfortable number. We always, we want to have more than that. Number of calls had grown to 286. We realized that we needed to bring in people, and in 2012, all of our members put on a great effort in recruiting people. We brought in 10 new members in 2012. Unfortunately, by year-end, we had nine members resign. We ended the year with a total of 37. Our calls were up to 399 by year-end. From the point of view of the calls, we increased from 2009 to 2012, we increased our call volume 83%. We increased our membership per year, we increased our membership by 100%. So far, as of the 31st of May of this year, we've had four new members join us, we've lost three. Total membership at the end of the month of May was 38. Total number of calls, May 31st, is 175 already. We've got four applicants under review at this time. Our recruitment efforts are working. We're bringing people in the door. Our total number at year-end, however, stubbornly refuses to grow. In this same timeframe, 2009 to 2012, city of Dickinson has increased population by 9,000 people, approximately. By reports that the city administrator has given, and Mayor Johnson, some of your own reports even, we've added another whole community to our city in population and in size. We have six members on the department with 25 years of service or more, including two full-time members. Now, most of the members that I've talked about leaving in the previous chart are members that were with us five years or less, young people and in new careers. And that's what takes them away, you know, they're growing and their careers are growing. And what happens with a lot of them is that next step for them, career-wise, that next step for them that takes them another step higher on the ladder, also takes them away from here. So the majority of the people we talk about that are leaving us are with us five years or less. But again, we do have six members with 25 or more years of service, including two full-time. Within the next three years, it can be expected that several or all of those may retire. Every one of those positions is an officer's position. And the total number of members that I talk about, that includes the full-time staff, six positions are full-time. The chief, the fire prevention specialist, a fire engineer, two fire inspectors, and our firefighter. Employee support, employer's support and family support is extremely important to our members. It's not easy being a volunteer firefighter. We ask an exceptional amount of time from our people. And time, we need their time, we need to have them be able to respond, we need to have them available for training. When someone comes to us as a new member, they don't just walk through the door, get a helmet, a coat, a pair of boots, and a pager handed to them, and a slap on the shoulder, and we tell them, hey, you know what, if that pager goes off and you can make it, well, you know, that's good, and if you can't make it, well, no big deal. If they don't have the time for us, if they don't have the time for response, they don't have the time for training, so we make sure they can do it right, that is a really big deal. But what you see here that really deserves credit and attention, 26 businesses, 26 local businesses listed, that all have at least one, and in some cases, several, employees as part of our fire department. There's no way to thank those businesses enough, and there's no way to thank the families of our volunteers enough either, quite honestly. As I stated, you know, being a volunteer firefighter is not for everyone, but it is a tremendous way to serve the community. Another way that our members serve the community is through community involvement. One of the different ways we do that is for the past several years, we have partnered with the Sunset Senior Center to host a breakfast over Rough Rider Days. This year, that breakfast will be Saturday morning, June 29th, 7:00 a.m. at the Sunset Senior Center. All the proceeds from that breakfast goes back to the Sunset Senior Center. It is our great pleasure to work with the Sunset Senior Center on hosting that breakfast, and it'll be our pleasure to serve you that morning. Commissioners, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well spoken. Any comments or questions for the chief by the commission? Again, if there are viewers that are watching us on Channel 19, and they're interested, who should they contact if they're interested in becoming volunteers?
They can call the central fire station, just call our general office number. They can talk to any one of our members there, any one of the full-time staff, any one of the volunteers that they may know. They can access the information on our website. We'd be more than glad to talk to them.
Okay.
Chief, the turnover that you do see annually, you know, is that a, is that a time issue for most of those people, or what's the reason for that turnover?
Time is a big thing, you know, time is absolutely our enemy, whether it's time that they can give us, or whether it's the time that they need to put in the training. Careers, jobs. And we've, just recently, we had a gentleman that was with us for about four months, really, you've got to give these people a lot of credit. They really try. They really want to be a part of the organization. But after his job didn't let up at 80 to 100 hours a week, you know, he came in and said, yeah, I just can't do this anymore. We've had members that have quit us because they're going back home to a different state, back home to school. A lot of them that have seen career advancement, and that career advancement takes them someplace else. We've got good people, good people coming to us, and good people that are recognized by their employers also. And they move them, unfortunately, up and out, you know, that's the career step for them, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, one question.
Yes.
Do any of those businesses you listed have an incentive for the employees to join the fire department?
Well, I think the biggest incentive that they give is they allow the employee to respond if needed to the best of their ability to do so. One of the things to keep in mind there is when you see that our calls have increased from 2009 to 2012, 83%. That's 83% more time somebody wasn't in their office, or maybe on a production line, or maybe home with their families. That's starting to impact us. And I'm going to be presenting another meeting or another presentation to you, talking about that, how that's impacting us. Sometimes the employer is able to keep that employee on the clock, but you know, that's very difficult. That's really difficult to do. So it's more just an acknowledgement of the fact that they're a member and a willingness to let them leave work and respond, and work with them as best they can.
Chief Seavock, do they ever, on your agenda, do they spend so many nights at the fire station then as a volunteer, or is that strictly?
Oh, yes, and that, being a member of the Dickinson Fire Department, it is not easy. It's not for everyone, and it's not easy. We ask a lot of our people. Our volunteers serve a part in their turn of a regular scheduled on-call, where they're actually on-call. Every night of the year, no matter what it is, we have two members that are at the fire station from 9:30 at night to 6:30 in the morning. You've, of course, heard me say that in other reports. The amount of training, there isn't a week in a month where one night isn't dedicated to some aspect of training involving our department anymore. And I have to think about it, I go back to when I started, where being a firefighter for the city of Dickinson, you fought fires. Hazardous materials and hazmat response and all of that world was just something that was just being talked about. Boy, I'm really dating myself, I know, but auto extrication was just coming into being, emergency medical response, none of that stuff was on our plate. All of that stuff is on our plate now. There's a tremendous, tremendous amount of time we ask of our people. And not just in training and response, but in commitment to being on-call and things like that, too. And the members we have are the pillars of the community, I'll tell you that. You can't find better people.
Chief Seavock, one question. Could you talk a little bit about how future sites, substations and main stations will affect volunteerism, or your need for volunteers in the future?
Well, and it's going to be a very difficult thing, because as you see, and as we believe, our recruitment efforts work. We're bringing people through the door. And the population base of Dickinson is growing, so you would think that that would relate to that much more to draw from, and in a sense it does. But the bottom line, that year-end number, we just can't get that to grow. So when we look at a new station coming online and our ability to have some night-duty people in that station, without growing that base number that much more, it's going to be difficult to do. Now, on the other hand, that may be a marketing tool, and we hope to some extent it is, that a new neighborhood, a new development will see a new station and say, you know, and in some people's minds, they may think, you know, there's that building sitting there, that's the fire department, maybe I got to go talk to somebody about that. So we hope to work it that way also. We hope in a sense, it's like a billboard out there for us, we get some calls and get some people interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move to engineering. And Mr. Watson, you have two or three items there. I know you have the master stormwater management contract, so I'll let you introduce that.
Mr. President, Commissioner, thank you. Tonight, I'm requesting authorization to enter into a contract for the purposes of developing a master drainage plan for the city to HDR Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $200,000. This, as I indicated before, when responding to the LiDAR presentation, this is an important document that will identify issues involved with flood events and help us mitigate projects to protect the city from both the 10-year and the 100-year storm events. This is an important document for the city that will allow us to identify areas where we can locate regional flood control projects and help, and perhaps get the development community involved in helping us develop those, at least maybe giving us easements or helping us get the property to develop area-wide flood control projects.
Remind us, how are we funding this again? Was it, did we carry this in our 2013 budget, or is this an addition?
I would have to defer to city administrator, Mr. Kessel.
No, I don't believe we did carry this in our budget. This is new. This actually came from, direction from the commission to try to develop a stormwater management plan, so it is not in the budget at all.
Is it included in that list of 27 projects we went over the other day? Mr.? Mr. Coling, you shook, said no.
I don't think it is.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item?
They're talking about it, has it been a four-month project?
Yes, about, it's hard to tell.
Well, I remember Mr. Commissioner Jackson making some very positive comments regarding this project, and why we need it, and I intend to vote for it, I just know now that we have to add another $200,000 to the list of many millions that we need, so.
That, and I think we need to understand that it's quite likely this study is going to come back to us and say, we have some capital improvements to make regarding surface water. It's really important we do this, this is the equivalent of what we did with the water modeling, the sewer modeling, and the transportation study, it's the same level of work, and it's something that's just fallen by the wayside this last couple of years, we need to do it.
Other comments?
There's nothing of this nature in the 2035 comprehensive plan.
No, that's what Commissioner Jackson's saying, we did the other components, but this component was not included in that plan?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move we approve the contract with HDR.
Is there a second?
Second.
Other discussion? Harry Dunn will vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Stukart.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is with the railroad grade separation, and Mr. Watson will have you tell us about that also.
Mr. President, Commission, in your package, you'll find a decision document prepared by the North Dakota Department of Transportation regarding the railroad grade separation on State Avenue. The rather lengthy document, the conclusion of the document basically says that the recommendation is to approve that cross-section that I recommended, actually, in the area of State Avenue and Villard, so that the project could successfully pass the old bowling alley without having to take that building as part of the right-of-way, and reduces the lane width to something reasonable, like 11-foot lanes, and we'll also be adding a median barrier to have access control on those grades that go up the bridge that will go over the railroad. Access control in that area is important to maintain safety, so this decision document is really to gain concurrence from the commission, to make them aware that we are intending, that DOT is intending to reduce the typical section, the roadway section in that area, so that we can successfully get by that building without taking the old bowling alley. Further south from the bowling alley, we would go back to a more general roadway section where we will widen out and maintain the boulevard between the sidewalk and the curb, so that it looks closer to what we've identified in the compline for a typical section.
As I read the document, I mean, they give us three options, but they pretty much tell you in the document why options one and two are not very good options, so it's, we really don't have a lot of choice here, do we? I mean, the way I read that, it's pretty much, we concur with option three?
Well, the short answer to that is that you can, that we can proceed with options one or two if we want to take the old bowling alley. And I don't know how much appetite the commission has to do that, but as I indicated before, I recommended the reduced roadway section so that we could avoid taking that business who happened to just open the door probably a month ago.
Right.
So I think, I personally would recommend going, concurring with the recommendation, but then it's my recommendation, so why wouldn't I concur with that?
You haven't changed your mind since you recommended it?
I have not.
Okay. Well, you're looking for a motion record that the commission concurs with option three, is that really what you're looking for?
Mr. President, I think that would be appropriate, you know, just to get the DOT, make the DOT aware that the commission's aware that we are reducing the typical section in that area, so that they know that you know that the direction we're proceeding.
Right. I think, you know, what would be, I think, helpful for the, at least for me, and I'm assuming my fellow commissioners and general public, is as soon as we can see a 3D model of how this is projected to look, that we can, you know, put up on the screen here so the public can see it, I think that would be good. I know at either the previous meeting, or two meetings ago, you told us that it's going to be an overpass, not an underpass, and I think that's good news, but that's really going to change how things look over there, and maybe even some traffic patterns, where there are other businesses there besides the old bowling alley. So I think as soon as the 3D image of this can be put together, it'd sure be helpful to see it.
Well, I'm not sure when a 3D image is going to be generated, I'm pretty sure that I could get some two-dimensional plans put together that I could bring forward and present to commission, probably relatively soon, that may be beneficial. I know that the businesses on the west side of the road, we will be presenting, we will be providing access from the rear of those businesses, the church, and the parcel.
I think there's a UPS building.
The UPS building will be providing a rear access back there, so that they will be able to access out onto Villard to reduce the impact on them as far as access goes. So I can get some images put together and bring them to commission here in the next time, maybe within the next month or so, to bring you up to speed later.
Well, I think whatever you have, now, keep in mind, there are going to be people like me, Bill, who look at two-dimensional drawings and don't get a 3D picture in their mind. I do, but it's always wrong, you know?
Well, I'll bring a pointer, and I can help you along.
All right.
Mr. Watson, like Dickinson ready-mix, will that be out through the rear also?
No, Dickinson ready-mix won't be affected.
It won't? Okay.
Okay, well, does anybody feel that we should endorse options one or two? Nope. So would there be a motion endorsing option three then, by the commission?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jackson, you're a qualified engineer on the commission, do you have anything you'd like to say about this?
I think option three is the only thing that makes sense. You know, when this thing gets built, it's going to look, it's going to look really good, people are going to be happy with what they see out there, and all, option three is the right way to go.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion, we have the second, we'll proceed to vote. Mrs. Stukart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. This will be done next week, then?
Next, oh, I'm sorry, next week, I will certainly inform the DOT that you confirm with my recommendation, and we'll move forward with the final design. The consultant is, at this time, contacting property owners in the area, letting them know that what the intention is here.
Do, okay. So you have some reports also that you want to highlight?
I do, I want to make the commission aware that we, the engineering department, is getting ready to start requiring a permit for contractors to enter our right-of-way and do any sort of construction, so that we have a handle on who is in our right-of-way and what they're doing. Right now, we have contractors all over the city that are building any number of things in our right-of-way, and we have no idea that they were there, are there, or have been there. And in a lot of cases, the construction is not what I would call responsible, and we're having issues with trenching, caving in, and zero compaction, and the street going bad, and so this right-of-way application will dovetail right into our new construction management team that we're hopefully going to put onboard in the next month or so, so that they would help them know when and who is in the right-of-way and what they're doing. The proposed application fee is $250 for any contractor that wishes to come in our right-of-way and construct anything at all, that includes water and sewer taps, and it includes...
In your experience, is this, would other cities of our size have this requirement?
Absolutely, yes. Very definitely, we need to know who's in the right-of-way and what they're doing, and so that we have a handle on requiring adequate construction inspection process, so that we can protect our infrastructure. This application would include anything at all that's done within the right-of-way, that would include paving, sidewalks, sewer and water taps, just anything at all that anyone wants to do in our right-of-way, we would know about it. And this is a very important step for the city, so that we can get our, get a handle on what somebody's doing on our property.
Since, if you go ahead with this, since apparently our contractors are not used to doing this, how, do you have an idea how you're going to communicate to the general construction public this requirement?
Yes, I am preparing now a letter to go out to all the contractors in the area, notifying them of the process and how much it's going to cost, and what the lead time is going to be, and so forth, and we're anticipating, or the suggested start date would be August 5th, so we're going to give them a month's notice, so that everyone is on board with where we're going on this. I think one of the most important parts of this application process is that before a permit is issued to go, to construct anything within our right-of-way, we're, we will be requiring a deposit be made and kept on account here at the city, or with a financial institution. We haven't really ironed out the details of that, but this deposit would cover the inspection process of our construction management team, so that the contractor is actually going to end up paying for us to inspect his construction. So the better he is at constructing infrastructure for us in our right-of-way, the less his fee's going to be to inspect those construction. And that, those fees will depend very much on how big the project is, and what's being constructed on our property.
With this new permit, I expect most of the occasions will be water and sewer services, I would expect.
A lot of them will be, but, you know, there's contractors that are out there paving, you know, building roads, and putting sidewalks in, curbing gutter, and all of that's in our right-of-way, and that has to all be covered by a right-of-way permit.
Any other comments or questions on the right-of-way permit?
Will you be meeting with the Dickinson area builders?
We will definitely be supplying them with this information, yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question, do they have to get, say, if they're a general contractor, like when construction is to do all of the curbs, can they just get one group permit, or do they have to get it for every curb they do?
The permit is, the permit will be time-sensitive, so that our, so that our CM team will know when they're out there, so, no, they won't be able to come in and get a blanket permit for the summertime, because they're going to install curbing gutter throughout areas in the city, because it's important for us to know where they are and what they're doing. So there'll be some leeway in getting, giving permits that are for construction in a contiguous area, but, no, there won't be any blanket permits, and even the major utilities will still need to come and get a right-of-way permit, although there may not be a fee associated with that. We still need to know where they are and what they're doing, because our construction management team is going to have oversight of everything that's being done in the right-of-way to protect our interests.
So that pertains to the new developments, like the aprons for the driveway and all that?
If it's in our right-of-way, we want to know about it, and we're going to want eyes on by our team, so that we are assured that the construction is being done properly. So that includes anything being done in our right-of-way by Consolidated, or MDU, or any of the utilities, or any contractors are going to need to check in with the city to make sure that we're aware that they're there.
What's the application process going to consist of?
Well, there'll be an application that they need to fill out, and they'll check on what they're going to be doing in our, within the right-of-way, and then that will be circulated around to the different departments in the city. And with the application, they will submit a plan of what they intend to do. Hopefully, that plan will have had previous approval by the engineering department, and the public works department, and all the other, the fire department, and all the other departments within the city that need to approve those plans. And if that's the case, then we're anticipating that the application process will be five days, five working days or less. If the plans submitted with the application do not have prior city approval, then, of course, the application process is going to be more lengthy, because it's going to involve the regular plan inspection and evaluation process that the development folks currently have to go through. So it just depends on if their plans have been approved prior to the application process.
We wouldn't be doing this, though, on a project that's been let by the city?
No. No, because we know where they're going to be. If we did, it would only be for record-keeping purposes, so that we could track it in our software system.
I'm thinking about this turnaround time, you know, and trying to keep things moving in the city.
And Commissioner, we're very cognizant of that, the city staff is doing our best to move projects through the city. But I think part of the responsibilities that we have is to protect the city's infrastructure, and without this kind of a program, we're just really letting contractors do whatever they want to in the right-of-way, without us having any control over that construction process.
Well, I would just hope that we, that we wouldn't have to add another permit on a project that's been formally let. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, Commissioner, and I think for the most part, this is aimed at the development community, where they, there's various contractors working for various developments, and they're kind of willy-nilly out in the right-of-way, and nobody really has a handle on where or what they're doing. And the, I think the main thrust of this is to get a control over that. I would certainly hope that we have control over our own projects and our own construction contractors. Because we will, of course, have our own construction management and inspection teams involved in our own construction, capital improvement projects.
Okay. Anything else?
So, I just want... Because we will, of course, have our own construction management and inspection teams involved in our own construction, capital improvement projects.
Okay. Anything else?
So that, I just wanted to update the commission that this will be, excuse me, will be taking effect in early August, and we still haven't ironed out quite all the details, but we've been working pretty hard on getting this permit put together, and the fees, and how we're going to accept the deposit by the contractors, and so forth. So, and as I indicated, I'm getting the letter ready to go maybe out next week. If there are any other questions, I do have some project updates.
All right. We'll hear the project updates.
Okay, so the Reliever Route still is going to be bid in June, June 28th, for construction of the urban section this summer. And we're being promised by the DOT that that's going to be open for traffic in early November. The interchange at Exit 56 will be bid in November. The stormwater drainage study is approved earlier, and you approved the LiDAR, so that's going to move forward very rapidly. 12th Street West Project, the pre-construction meeting will be this week, and construction to begin by July 1st. The city's share of the funding on this project, as you probably know, is about $900,000, and we've been advised by the contractor that they will need the entire construction season to complete that project. So they'll be working into October, probably, to finish that project up. The Highway 22 landscaping project was kicked off. We've got LTAG Engineering do the, doing the planning. The preliminary plan review was set for July 10th. We just heard from them today that they want to move that plan forward to have that meeting earlier, which is a good sign. So it looks like we're going to meet the PSNE plan date of August 23rd with no problem. And the bid opening date for that project is November 15th. The construction management team, HDR, has been selected to perform the construction management for the city, as I was just indicating, in conjunction with the right of way permit. We're developing a contract at this time to move forward for approval by the commission. The railroad quiet zone, we had, I had a meeting today with one of the consultants that will, we will be asked to submit a costed RFP to the city. Probably ask for the proposal to be completed by mid-July. And upcoming bids are proposed as follows, considering that the commission is going to approve our recommended project list. The 18-inch water tie from the existing water tank over to 30th Avenue is proposed to bid July 15th. We still need to get right of way from NDSU, but City Administrator Mr. Kessel has been in discussions with those folks, and there doesn't seem to be any problem, except for the paperwork. The project is going to cost about $900,000. 40th Street Utilities include, will include sanitary sewer and a 14-inch water main. That project will go to bid on July 10th, and the expected cost is in the neighborhood of $550,000. Now, there is some discussion of whether we want to push those facilities underneath Highway 22 at this time, since we'll be coming back with the transportation project on 40th Street. And if we do see a need to go west with those facilities, now would be the time to bore them under the highway. And I have heard responses, both from Apex and from KLJ, indicating that the need for water and sewer on the west side of Highway 22 is there. So if we do do it, we should bore that now, and that would add approximately $350,000 to the contract. So if approved, then the total cost of the contract is now about $900,000, which should include the bore for both the water and sewer. The 21st Street Main project from state to the Timbers Development Project will include an 18-inch water main, and I just was in discussions this morning with the developer, and we're thinking probably that the sewer line will go up the creek alignment, rather than out in 21st Street. So I really don't have a solid estimate of what the cost would be, just for the water main, to feed that area. But the 18, that 18-inch water main would continue at a later date onto the new water tank, the new west water tank out in the Pine Crest area. So, but right now, the, this project was moved forward to the top of the list to capture some outside funding. So I anticipate that this project would be in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $400,000, just for the water main. The finished water pumping station will, should be bid December 1st. Our portion of that is about 400, about four and a half million, and the completion date is 2015. And the waste, the water reclamation facility influent pump station, which is actually really just another part of the water reclamation facility plant, actually, this project is ready to be bid next week, if we can get the right of way that we need. And the total cost of this is 9.6 million. And the last project I have for you to update tonight is the West Lift Station in Force Main. That is, the lift station is at the intersection of West Villard and Highway 10, and the Force Main would go across the southern portion of the city, down into the livestock influent pump station area. The bid would be in middle, mid-July of this year, for August construction starting. The total cost of this project is about 11 and a half million. Part of the project includes a bore underneath the railroad in the vicinity of Brady Mc's Plant, and that section of this, no, I'm sorry, that does not. So the, so the total cost is going to be about $11.5 million for the West Lift Station in Force Main. Mid-July bid let for August construction.
And President Johnson, if I could add, we were just informed late last week that the state grant land board has provided $7 million for that project. Those funds will become available in September.
So with that grant, that gives us a little more assurance that in this biennium that we're entering in, we should be close to the $43 million number in state aid?
I don't think I would jump to that conclusion quite yet. This $7 million was part of the grant-funded portion, and not part of the formula-funded portion. So this was an expectation.
Right, but I, we expected the formula money, plus the grant money, and I think that got us up close to $43 million.
The budget estimates that the state is providing us is 33. The, if they use...
And that includes the seven?
Yes. And if the estimates that Lynn Helms has provided become true, then we get to the $43 million.
Okay. For Mr. Steiner and Mrs. Dugard's benefit, you know, we had a meeting since we last met as a commission, where Mr. Jackson and I represented the commissioners, and we met with the entire staff, and they took us through their, it was 27 projects, I think, on that list at that time, and they expected costs and the priorities for these projects. And I was just talking with Mrs. Johnson prior to the meeting, that the way I read the numbers, it looked to me like we would have to borrow between 35 and 40 million dollars to do all those projects on the list. And that's in addition to borrowing the 40 and a half million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant, and borrowing roughly the 17 million dollars to do the expansion of the community center. I think we have the borrowing ability to do that, so, I mean, my recommendation would be that if I've got the numbers right, we should go ahead and do all those projects, which you're proceeding to do right now, anyway. But it looks to me like it's a doable thing. We also talked that if we can get a bank to give us a short-term construction loan, we could finance this through that construction loan, maybe have a loan amount of roughly $30 million, and then you can do your bonding a little later. The risk you run with that is that if interest rates continue to inch up, we might pay a little higher interest rate. But the longer we wait, the more accurate we're going to be on our bonding. At that meeting, we also asked the staff to look forward into the next two years, and tell us what you think the construction amount requirements are going to be in the next two years. And Mr. Watson put out an email, and I think that was in response to that question. If I remember right, that number is roughly $128 million.
That's correct, and, yeah, so that number's been massaged a little bit since I sent that email out, and I really need to get City Administrator Mr. Kessel's approval of what was included in that email, that number. But it's, I would say around 130 million, something like that.
It's a pretty big number, and we're going to have issues with that, because if we go ahead and borrow $40 million for this go-around, we may not be at our bonding limit, but I'm sure we can see it from there. And to deal with another $128 million, here's how the numbers would work. I mean, if, let's just assume we get $43 million from the state again for that next biennium, we have to start making payments on the money we borrowed. I'm guessing that those, I'm not guessing, I've run the numbers, it'll be at least $5 million a year in payments. So if you look at a biennium, that's 10 million. If the state gives us 43, you back out 10 for payments on what you've already borrowed, you have a net of 33. So if you're saying it's roughly 130 million, that leaves us $100 million short. We got issues.
Well, Mr. President, I have been assured by our consultant group, who have been helping us with the sewer and the water modeling, that if we can build these first projects, the city will be in pretty good shape moving forward, so...
So we might be able to have some flexibility on that?
We'll be able to push some of that, other, some of those other projects, I think, down the road a little bit easier than these first projects.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, unless the state will come up with considerably more money for the next, the biennium that follows the one we're about to enter into. Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, we met with bond counsel today to go over some of these very issues, and they told us, based on today's revenue, that 55 is probably our ceiling for a bond issue this year, based on current revenues. So, you know, it's hard to predict going forward how our revenue will shake out. We'll learn a lot more during our budget process, and as you said, as time goes on. But just wanted to throw that out there, that they're looking at a 55 number, kind of being our maximum at this time. And then also, the second list for the next biennium costs, I'm not sure if we've applied the SAC and WAC fees, or any other revenue streams that might drop our commitment to that infrastructure cost. So that potential does exist, that the number may be a little less than 130 million.
Well, I hope so, because, I mean, we're, we're going to, we'll hit a limit, as you already pointed out, which might be $55 million in what we can borrow, and then that's it. But with the projects that you identified as a priority, those 27, I'm of the opinion we can find, financially, we can handle all those.
I'll be sharing that list with the Planning and Zoning Commission on Wednesday at their meeting. A lot of the plaits moving forward, of course, are contingent upon water and sewer and other infrastructure. So just an FYI, we'll be sharing the prioritization list with Planning and Zoning on Wednesday. So have a good idea of what the plans are, when the infrastructure will be provided, and then our developers then will have a great idea as well.
You know, we've been, we've known for two or three years that we were going to face what we're facing these recent weeks, and doing what we're doing right now. Now that it's actually happening, we're actually spending the money, we're going to borrow the money, I wonder if we don't need to update the governor's office, maybe certain legislative leaders. I wonder if it's not, I don't think it is too early to keep them in the loop, now that it's really happening, before we told them that it was going to happen. And I suspect there's always some questioning about that. Now that it is, I wonder if we shouldn't bring them along?
I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Jackson, and I did have a conversation with Commissioners, or, excuse me, Representative Steiner, as late as Friday of last week, but I haven't collectively informed the rest of our elected officials.
Anything else, Mr. Watson?
Really, nothing, other than these, some of these projects, these larger projects are moving forward, and I think it's important to have the money in the bank before we go to bid. And so I've been working with City Administrator Mr. Kessel to make sure that that money is available before we do go to bid and ultimately select a contractor to do the work.
Well, it may not be exactly in the bank, but I think we'll have commitments, you know. We'll move on then to community development. And Mr. Cottan, you have a few items here. Would you like to take us through them?
Yes, Mr. President. Commissioners, the first item is a rezoning petition. This is a rezoning petition from general commercial to low-density residential for two lots generally located east of 10th Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. There are no changes from the first reading, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, this ordinance 1512, if there's anyone from the community that would like to comment regarding 1512, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'd hear your comments. Is there anybody that'd like to comment on 1512? Is there no one that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by Commissioners on ordinance 1512?
I will move that we approve second reading, final passage of 1512.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dugard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a development agreement for the BK subdivision. BK subdivision, if you recall, was approved November 7, 2011. Prior to the recordation of the plat, City Commission required a development agreement to specify the pavement of the streets and some other infrastructure improvements. Attached in your pack of materials is the original, is the development agreement. Since then, we've had discussions with the developer, and their staff has recommended some changes. You have the revised version tonight. On page three, I could summarize the changes for you. On page three, we removed the references to the city engineering department, and put the Stark County Road Superintendent, since it's outside the city boundary... since it's outside the city boundaries and located within the extraterritorial zone, it seemed appropriate for that. We also removed the condition that the improvements would need to be finalized within eighteen months, and we changed that to state that prior to certificate of occupancy, any additional lots would be required to finish the remainder of the plat or the remainder of the infrastructure for the plat, and removed any reference on the subsequent pages that refer to the city engineering. With that, city staff recommends approval. It's our understanding the developer has looked at that prior to the meeting and is in concurrence with that.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. Mr. Coling, anything that you'd add?
No, Mr. President.
Any comments or questions by Commissioners regarding this agreement?
My only comment, I think the agreement's good. I'm glad to see we're following through with these things. I think we really need to continue to recognize that when we get out in the ETA, the ETZ, that we've got county involvement, and I understand the county has been consulted on this, but I don't think we can do too much of that. We're making requirements here now that the county is really going to end up living with. The county will end up maintaining these roads and streets, and I just think we've to really make sure we're getting good communication with the county on these things.
With respect to your question, Commissioner Johnson, Jackson, we have, you know, over the last year, well over a year now, we've been referencing that as part of the plats, and I think that the discussion of the pavement of the roads came about from the county commissioner that sits on Commissioner Elkins. So I think that we definitely have the concurrence with that, but we will convey that. Most of the developers now or the engineers know about that reference to paving in the extraterritorial zone.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson, I'd also like to just recognize Steve Josephson on this. He has kind of been our point man, our go-between, between the city and the county on some of these issues in the ETZ, and he did assist in having that communication and putting this agreement together as well.
Good. Okay, any other comments?
Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering and Surveying. We've been representing the owner of BK subdivision. I'd just like to point out, there was one minor change. Alheiser, the county road superintendent, had requested an eight-inch base section. We had presented a six-inch base in our exhibit. We will be changing that to eight, just so you're all aware of that change. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Coling, if we're in favor of approving this agreement, do we have to make any special wording to a motion because there have been some changes, or can we just simply move to approve the development agreement?
It would just be a motion to approve the development agreement.
Okay. Anybody care to move that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion now? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stugart?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item I have is the building permit report for the month ending of May. If you look at the report, under commercial structures, we're remaining, we're keeping the pace as last year. Actually, we're one permit ahead from twenty-two at this point this year compared to twenty-one of last year. The remaining totals for new building permits, you can tell, are significantly reduced. Single-family permits are down. At the end of May, we're at ninety-five compared to two-hundred-and-eighty-two of last year, a sixty-six percent reduction from that. Multifamily, we are down as well. The total number of units for multifamily at this rate, we're at one-sixty-eight compared to two-seventy-eight, forty percent reduction. One good part that I can mention is that our commercial permits that are coming in are higher, are larger developments. The new building permit values, we're at one hundred and fifty-one million compared to one hundred and eighteen million, a twenty-two percent increase from last year. Our alterations and additions, we are at an increase as well. As mentioned earlier, the fees remitted to the city were at two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand. We had budgeted for community development. We're under building permits, six-hundred-thousand, so we are exceeding it as of the end of five months. I do have some projections for you. The projections, based upon discussions with developers, looking at existing plats that may come on board and just the general environment, I would anticipate by the end of the year around a sixty-one percent reduction in single-family for the year, and there's various reasons for that, and I'll talk about that momentarily. Apartments, I'm looking at about a fifteen percent reduction, so a total building permit reduction by the end of the year, roughly twenty-seven percent based upon those discussions. I think that the primary cause for single-family, and I would like to get input from Commissioner Dukart, would be the high lot prices. A lot of the inventory over the last several years that has been developed, single-family-wise, these lots were purchased several years ago at a significantly reduced rate, at twenty-thousand, thirty-thousand, compared to today's market conditions, which is typical of around sixty-thousand. When you factor in, traditionally, many of the developers looked at the total house cost, ten percent of that would have been the lot cost. And if the lot cost several years ago was around twenty-thousand, now it's at sixty-thousand, you're looking at a very rapid increase, and it's making it difficult for the local developers to buy the lots at that rate, and then also build a house that fits in with the majority of the market, which is between two-hundred-thousand and two-sixty at this point. When you factor in that increased lot cost, a lot of these developers are building houses at three-hundred-plus, and the market is a smaller market than it is for the market a little bit below that. So based upon that, I've had some of the developers that have said that they are not buying up as many lots. Add to that, we don't have the significant a number of lots that are going to be coming on this year with respect to single-family. That would be indicative of why we're going to have a reduction, at least in single-family. Also, there's costs, there's capacity issues that we have talked about for some of these single-family subdivisions that may be delayed based upon our infrastructure availability coming to the site, professional construction costs that are ever increasing as well. So I just wanted to give you a general idea of why I feel that the demand will be down this year, I mean, the supply. The demand is still very high, and that's indicative of the second document that's attached with your pack of materials from Joe Hirschfeld. He talked about market trends within the city. Based upon his analysis, the market is still very active. Despite the increase in inventories and the extended days in the market, the number of sales continue to increase slightly. And I think that the economy here is still very good. It's just that until the, this is my speculation, until the cost of raw land and the cost of developed lots drop to where the market should be, we may see a prolonged period, a building period for single-family instead of the rates that we had for the last two years. And I'm available if you have any questions with respect to that.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. Any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move to public works then, and we have a couple of items there.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commission. First on my list is request approval for construction administration services with Katermis Lee and Jackson for the public works facility. We are under construction now, and myself and my staff does not have time to watch over the project, and I guess I'm requesting permission to have Katermis Lee and Jackson do the construction administration and management, not to exceed the thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Why isn't the architect doing that?
The architect is, in their contract, is doing weekly reviews, mostly of the building, not the civil. Right now, we're doing the water sewer and street, and I think it's pertinent that we have somebody there overseeing the construction.
Other comments or questions?
What's the dollar amount of this contract?
Not to exceed thirty-eight thousand.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion? Mr. Jackson probably isn't comfortable in making this motion, so we'll have to go with one of you two.
I was still standing it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve it? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I will abstain from the vote, Mr. President.
Mayor Johnson, I did review the contract of the architect because I guess I assumed there was more oversight on this project, but in his contract, it's just minimal oversight for the building. So I feel this is something that probably should have been done from the beginning.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Mr. President, just a comment here, thirty-eight thousand for this one project for an engineer. What can we put an engineer on staff for? I'm just, in a roundabout number, we're looking at eighty thousand a year. You know, I'm wondering if we're going to run into this on a lot of our projects, or maybe we're better off putting the money into an additional engineer on staff.
If I may, first, that's, I mean, that's where we're at. We're under staff to, you know, I thought on some of these projects, I'd be able to be out there more, some of my staff. We just don't have the time or the staff to cover it. And engineering, I won't speak for Mr. Watson, but they're so busy with development and not construction right now.
So you're going to be bringing more of these to us, the engineering department?
Well, I think some of the stuff that Mr. Watson said about construction management team, if we get a construction management team, this is what they would do on all our municipal projects, is they would be running our municipal projects as far as construction management administration goes. And we just don't have the team on board yet to do this project.
Commissioner Steiner, you're accurate, though, when it comes to project management. There's twenty-seven projects that we're going to have to do the paperwork on and manage those throughout, and I think part of the two thousand and fourteen budget, you're going to see a response to that very question. And to kind of give you your initial question, one-thirty. You're not going to touch eighty-five.
I'm a cheap engineer.
They don't come cheap in western North Dakota.
Should have studied more in school, I guess.
But, Mr. Steiner, you know, you raise a good point, and I think what the staff and the commission will have to kind of choose between is, you know, how much do you outsource and how much do you try to cover with full-time employees? We know at some point the construction activity should drop significantly. If you try to cover too much with employees, then you end up in a position where, you know, one day you're overstaffed. And it's probably, in the short term, it'll appear to be more cost-effective to do it with your own employees, but if you look at it over the longer term, it's probably more, it might be more effective to outsource because once the workload drops, you just reduce the amount that you're outsourcing. And I guess my initial reaction to this would be, I tend to come down on the outsourced side right now, just because I think when we get another two or three years down the road, I think we'll see quite a drop in at least construction activity from our point of view. We will have built out quite a bit of infrastructure and be able to handle a much larger population. Not that, you know, our infrastructure build-out would grind down or come down to nothing or zero, but I think it'll, we're going to be front-end loaded on our infrastructure activity. I think this also, you know, when we're looking at projects, we had a discussion the other day on the Public Safety Building where we said, given the environment we're in, construction management at risk might be a very good way to go on that. Well, your construction manager then would be doing much of this. If we would, looking back, we'd have done the Public Works Building with a construction manager at risk, you wouldn't be standing in front of us asking to do this, you know. So...
And I know BISMA is in a different situation than we are, and I believe they discussed at the last City Commission about releasing their construction managers, program that they have under the construction manager side, and we're thinking about adding one. So I know we're in two different environments, but it's kind of interesting that they, you know, they're reducing their, depending on...
Mr. President, I really think it's a combination of the both. I think that the staff could be augmented and probably should be augmented because really there's not enough staff even to control the construction management, even if we have a team on board, because we still have to manage that construction management team. And I'm sure you all know how busy I am, and I just really can't do it all. So from some aspects, it's good to have a construction management team because really they're specialized, and you really can't get a single person on board that's going to be able to run all your testing and your inspection and your, all of those parts of the construction management that are necessary, but really, we really do need some other staff to help manage the other, the construction management team.
I just thought it was interesting to hear them talk about BISMA.
President Johnson, I did want to add, too, that there was earlier discussion about admin assistant, and I don't think it was clarified that, I believe, that admin assistant was also part-time public works, but maybe that's for further discussions.
Okay, we've got a request here for thirty-eight thousand dollars. I believe we had the motion. Did we, did you second it, Mr. Steiner?
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did, okay. Other discussion? Mr. Jackson's going to abstain from this vote, so if there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Stugart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Let you continue.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. My next item on the agenda is request to approve the feasibility study with Wink Engineering. One of the things I want to bring up is that the landfill and the collection for the city is a large enterprise fund and that the landfill is a regional landfill, and so, you know, we have to look at what's going on in the city but also throughout the county and the region. And I believe the landfill and collection of solid waste was looked at in the comprehensive plan but very limited. I think we need a more in-depth review of it. I think there's a lot of issues that are coming up quicker than I thought on the Baylor Building, for example, that the need that we're going to have to replace the Baylor, our amount of tonnage of solid waste has increased almost doubled in the last three years. So that means that our landfill space is dwindling that much faster. We need to look at additional areas for solid waste, maybe the recycling, inert waste, and also with collection. And the Baylor Building, we have a very large increase of injuries. In the last three years, we've gone from five incidents in solid waste to over fifteen just this year. So I think it's a real need to look at what we're doing for solid waste collection and disposal.
This, what's the budget on this feasibility study?
Fifty-eight, not to exceed fifty-eight thousand. Currently, I have probably over half of that in budget right now that we can cover for engineering services.
Okay. Any comments or questions here?
Just curiosity, when I read this, it certainly looks like there's some strong interest on your part and Mr. Prowse's part to possibly do away with the Baylor operation.
Well, I think we need to look at it seriously. One issue with the Baylor is we need to replace it. So, if we need to replace it, it's going to be, you know, over a million dollars. And with the increase of garbage coming in, not just from Dickinson, but the area, you know, that's a big move. It's almost going to have to be twice that. I mean, we're going to have to have a large Baylor, large bailing facility. With the amount of employees, it takes five people at the Baylor to run the Baylor. With the injuries, employees, and cost of a Baylor, I think it's time, we really need to look at other options. Right now, I feel we're duplicating services. We do loose fill at the landfill, we have a compactor, and we're bailing. We're doing both. I don't know any other facility landfill in Montana or North Dakota that does both. Also, on the collection side, I think we're duplicating services. We have an automated truck, which most people went to in the 80s, but also, we're coming behind with a rear loader, which is, there's injuries with that, so we're duplicating services there. I don't know any collection in the next, in the three states that are doing both without individuals paying for that. So, I think those are some issues we really need to look at.
Yeah, and I realize your study is, that's what it's all about, but I know we've been concerned about having enough room in the landfill.
Right. And of course, as population increases, regional population increases, that decreases.
It'd be interesting.
Well, in this study, will they look at the rates that we're charging, or...
That's my understanding, we're going to look at rates. You know, there are some information, there is some information out there and different rates around, but that's one of the things I want, we're going to look at, is the rates, comparison to other areas, how the other areas do business. And in your discussion about projects earlier, too, you know, I think we have to look at rate structure, not just in solid waste, but water and sewer, to include some of these projects, or where those projects fall into the rate structure. And I think a lot of this could be done by rates, or, you know, our increased tonnage also does increase the amount of money coming in, so...
But it, as Mr. Jackson, I think, was alluding to, it decreases the remaining life of the landfill, and, you know, are we, is our rate structure sufficient that when it comes time to increase the size of the landfill, that we generated the kind of revenues necessary to do, you know, finance that?
Right.
So, we could be undercharging. That's why I asked about the rates, especially the other 22 communities that we're serving, are we making sure that they're paying their fair share in terms of covering the cost? Because really, the owner of the landfill, the city of Dickinson, is taking all the risk. If we have undercharged, then we've taken that financial risk.
Right. You have to look at, you're selling landfill space, you're selling space.
Right.
And also, with expansion of landfills, they're very costly. And I think, you know, we've been lucky to have the existing footprint, we've done some liners, but we've been lucky having our existing footprint of where we're at. Expanding landfills are very expensive.
So, I'm, you know, I'm, again, I'm in favor of doing this study. I just hope the scope of it includes a rate review, too.
I will make sure it does.
Any other discussion? Would there be a motion regarding this feasibility study?
I'll move, reapprove the study with Wink.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, President Johnson Commission. Next, I have just some project updates, and then I have just a couple pictures of some lift stations we saw in Bismarck. I guess we'll do the lift stations first. We went to Bismarck about a week, or a week, a couple weeks ago, and looked at some various lift stations in Bismarck. Mr. Berg with Apex took us on the tour, and this is one of the new facilities in Bismarck. It's actually a retrofit, but one of the reasons I want to show you the picture is it's similar to what our larger lift stations, the Influent Pump Station and the West Lift Station are going to be about this size. It's about an eight-to-11 million gallon a day facility, and it's going to be similar in look to this. I don't have a rendering of the Influent Pump Station or West Pump Station yet, but it'd be similar. And I've had a lot of questions about lift stations, so I wanted to bring and show the difference in some of these. You know, this is a eight-to, like I said, eight-to-11 MGD, you know, you're looking at probably seven to $10 million for a facility like this. Forgive my pictures, this is off a phone. In these lift stations are all sorts of controls. You have the larger pumps, variable frequency drives that this shows. This is just inside on the upper level of how it looks on the upstairs. And then downstairs, you'll see some of the check valves and piping associated with this lift station. I guess you can kind of see an arm on the left there to see what, you know, how big this facility is, and this, like I said, will be similar to our Influent and our West Pump Station. The other thing I wanted to show you real quick, this is the last picture, I, like I said, I just had a couple, is lift station buildings of a smaller nature. You know, we're going from the multi, eight-to-10 million gallon a day lift station to something like this, you know, that would be under a million, probably 500,000 gallons per day or less, and how we want them to look in different subdivisions and different areas of town. Right now, a lot of the lift stations, you see just have a arm coming up across support with a pulley in town, but we're trying to get some standard on what the lift station will look at in different subdivisions. And this is one that I took a picture of that I thought looked good. This is down by the river with the, there's some larger houses down there, and it kind of fits into the neighborhood with the type of siding and the size. As you can tell, it's quite a bit smaller. But I just wanted to show you a couple quick pictures of what they look like and the different sizes of lift stations that are out there, because there's a wide array of sizes and types. And then I was hoping to have a picture of our Influent Pump Station or our West Pump Station, but I didn't have that before the meeting, so... The next thing I wanted to bring up is just an update on some of our projects. The Public Works Building has been delayed from the weather. They're continuing to lay pipe as we speak and starting to work on the road, access road into the facility. There's been a couple change orders that I've denied because of the rain, but we'll be continuing to work on those. The water reclamation facility is estimated at 34 percent complete. The IFAS walls control building is up. They're starting to work on the headworks building and digging the area for the clarifiers out there. You're actually starting to see some more buildings out there. If you're interested, someday we'll take a look. Mr. Watson discussed already the Influent Pump Station, that it's ready to bid as soon as our appraisal comes in. The other current construction is the tanks. The sandblasting and priming of the Rocky Butte tank is done, it's ready for paint. There's some small safety change orders I'm working on with that. The water main project on Vallard, we've had quite a few issues with that. That included some blocks on West Vallard and also the boring under the tracks. The boring under the tracks, they had to move three times because it kept hitting some structure underneath. Last week, they finally did get through, a pilot hole through, and now they can continue with that and pull the line through. The water main on Vallard, all our valves that were there didn't shut off the pressure on that 16-inch main, so we had to bring in a crew from Chicago to do a valve stop on that, or a stop, and put in to shut the water down and then put a valve in, and we just got that done last week, so, I think that was last Thursday. So, they've been working through, throughout, I think, most of the weekend to try to get that job or that project done. Also, been working on SCADA for the city. Between all the lift stations and the booster station water tank level controls, we have talked to another company about the SCADA system and I think the need for that, especially with all the new infrastructure, how we're going to tie that in with a new system and tie it into the new Public Works facility. And also, on the, there was some discussion earlier about the aerials and GPS. We met with the GIS Workshop Company and looked at some of the possibilities to include public works infrastructure as a layer there. I've tried to find different GPS data endpoints that was done for the city and bring those in, and anyway, we're trying to compile that and get that a better mapping system. So, there's a lot of things we've been working on. That's about it.
Well, thank you. You know, we know that engineering and public works is really busy and really challenged, and I, you know, I think, you know, we do want to say that, we recognize that, and we appreciate what you're doing and your entire staff and team are doing. These are challenging times. I mean, just having three or four of these projects would be a handful, and we're running many times that amount, so... Again, thank you, so... Any other questions or comments here?
I just want to make one, not necessarily with the Public Works Directors or, I just wanted to say thank you to Attorney Cullen for doing the memo in my absence for this commission meeting.
Is there anything else from Public Works or for Public Works?
No, but I'm glad you're done. There was a lot of squealing going on up there.
We do appreciate the photographs, too, to show us, you know, either updates on projects that are going on, or in this case, examples of what lift stations look like. A lot of the general public, really, when we talk about a lift station, they may not get that picture in their minds, so I think we certainly appreciate you doing that and saying...
We'll try to do more of that, and with, like with the water reclamation facility, I thought in about a month or two, we'll do another picture update on that, and we can see more, and hopefully with the Public Works facility, we'll have a presentation on that soon.
I think those are excellent things to do, so... Okay. Are there any reports by city commissioners? Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your concerns. There's no one from the public. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.